All this meeting to order, please drive with flag allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, who's taking a minute? Let the record reflect that Director Sather is hereby telepresence along with 10-13, Principal, I mean Principal, Principal Williams, and our school attorney, Margaret.
Skelton.
Margaret Skelton. Also, let the record reflect that John Yohan is not present. We have no student representations, representative, 5.0, agenda additions and deletions.
I just have one tonight, Mr. Chair, and that is there's a resolution in front of you that says resolution relating to appointing absentee ballot board members for the May 12th School District Special Election.
So that is a
Which could be important because it might not be in-person voting.
Okay. So then we would
It would be 12.5.
12.5. Okay. And all votes will be done by roll call per this telepresence and all this stuff we got going on, okay?
For the requirements. Because of COVID-19.
Because of, yeah, because of 6.0 visitor input, we have
I had an addition.
Oh.
Or is it under whole business?
Yeah, 13.1 will take, make it.
Board committees.
Board committees.
And just an update on meet and confer again.
13, should we just bundle those all together and just have Jeff Ancholes as one group?
That's fine.
Okay.
What was the first one Paulie said?
Board committees.
Board committees appointments.
And then meet and confer.
We were gonna meet and confer, but we got kinda sidelined here.
Telepresence.
We've been doing that daily, but not about that.
Okay.
More important things.
Okay, is that it? Okay. So 7.0 approved, no, agenda additions and deletions, and then 7, no visitor input. 7.0 approved the agenda as amended by roll call. That's kind of some weird
I'd move it.
I'll support.
Okay. So by roll call, it's moved by Director, Director Schober. And support by Director Lauderger to approve the agenda. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Discussion.
Discussion, excuse me.
Any discussion.
Any discussion. None being said, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Am I doing the roll call vote, or will you be doing the roll call vote, Kelly?
I'll do it still.
Thank you.
Director Schober.
Aye.
Director Lauderger.
Yes.
Myself, Director Sather is a yes. Director Addy.
Yes.
Director Sorkin.
Yes.
And Director Genalini.
Yes.
Vote passes with six yeses and one absent.
Just a clarification, on consent agenda C, if we are taking Brian off of those things, do we have to designate somebody to be replaced on those?
Yes, and I contemplated that throughout the week, and it would probably be best if you put Spencer on, Yana.
We add that to the agenda?
I wasn't sure until yesterday, because Spencer isn't here a lot, so I mean, we do need to check sign, but auditors will tell you it's not a great idea to have a person writing and checking, signing the checks, so. And I don't have any other options, so it kinda has to be Spencer.
Because once he comes off of those, nobody's authorized until we put someone on, right?
Right.
So we better do it tonight.
Since we approved the agenda, can we discuss that when we get to that item, please?
Oh, it's in the consent agenda.
It's in the consent agenda, Kelly. She's asking about, because we're removing Brian Mary as the signer on all those various things.
I realize, I realize, but I guess then are we changing our motion for the, we just approved the agenda?
Or do we just remove it from the consent agenda?
We just remove it.
And consider it under item 10.
Yeah, you can do that.
We could do that or amend it to.
You can amend it, you take it out of the consent agenda, and type it, vote it separately, and then you can amend it.
All right, so that would be 12.6.
But we aren't there. I mean, when we get to the consent agenda, we'll remove C and put it into 10, and then we'll discuss it there.
Should we approve the agenda? So 8.0, approve the treasures report.
In your packet, you see treasure report for the second check writing in March totaling disbursements totaling $223,262.79.
Can I get a motion to
Also move that to, approve the treasure report as read.
Director Genalini, all support. Any discussion?
All right, discussion, for two meetings now, we thought we were gonna support local industries wherever possible, this stuff, you know, man, okay? And the board agreed on it. I'm looking at the March 10th now. Again, we spent $505.35 with Super One grocery store in Virginia, in which we have a grocery store in Elwood here. Some of the items are ice cream, bottled chocolates, syrup, strawberry syrup, bowls, plastic spoons, these items are, I'm sure we could get them on IGA also. By the concern, this is, these blanket adjustments are, $205.89, $71.61, $98.78, that comes with $376.28. Just snacks, there's no breakdown on lunch, is that like a blanket deal that we have with just same Jeff or
I don't understand that question.
Well, we get these, we're all paid $205.89, but there's no breakdown on, as far as miscellaneous hospitality and supplies. And like there again, daycare snacks, whatever that is, I don't know, $71.61.
Yeah, that runs through community, yeah.
And then lunch for the advisory committee, do we take them down to a restaurant or what, you know? For $98.78, we don't have a breakdown on it.
What kind of breakdown do you need on that?
We do have a breakdown on his life supplies, you know, like chocolate chips and charred cereal and that.
As far as going to Super One, I did, we did go and talk to, I mean, it's, there's a lot of aspects to that, but I'll just use Home Ec for example, there's a couple of things, IGA doesn't always have what they, what she needs. For one, and they don't open until later in the day, and she needs to get that done before school starts. She has actually talked to them down there, and they have agreed that she'd be better off doing what she's doing.
And they probably don't have the inventory that
They don't have the inventory that she requires.
They have to come in here and just buy them out of all their stuff. I mean, I guess I don't
Well, that probably happened, I think, at Super One, too, that probably they're getting better shelves right now, I mean, they're in a situation here, that's
Anyway.
That's actually gonna be corrected, you know?
Anyway, Mr. Chair, we did look into that, as we said we would. It, I don't know that any change can be made.
Any more discussion on the treasures report? Okay, that being said, Kelly, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Director Genalini.
Yes.
Director Sorkin.
Yes.
Director Addy.
Yes.
Myself, Director Sather is a yes. Director Lauderger.
Yes.
Director Schober.
Yes.
And for Yohan is absent, the approved treasures report passes six yes and one absent.
Okay, moving on to 9.0, consent agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda with item C removed for further discussion and possible action.
Motion by Director Lauderger to approve the consent agenda with item C removed for possible action in maybe 10, or no, or it would be
According to 10.
Okay, support by, move that to 10, with support by Director Sather. Any discussion?
I just have a clarification on the March 9th regular meeting, and any future ones where we are approving coaching assignments. We had a discussion that you would put an asterisk or something to designate which ones are new employees or not, because I had wanted something else. The majority thought that just an asterisk would be sufficient, and I, that's fine, because I don't know which ones are new and which ones are not. So if we could, when minutes are drawn up to put that in the future ones, let us know somehow which ones are new people and which ones are returning, or if they're switching their, switching their assignments on these activities. Remember the discussion?
Yeah, I think we went through
We've been doing that, I guess, they just didn't do it this time, but I'll remind you.
No, I mean, even when we, I did see the board packet, and the board packet didn't either, not just the
I know.
Yeah, okay.
We have been doing that, you said that, and I
Okay, just an oversight.
I'm just gonna guess that there's an oversight.
Okay, just an oversight, no problem, that's all.
Okay, any more discussion on consent agenda? Kelly, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Director Genalini.
Yes.
Director Sorkin.
Yes.
Director Addy.
Yes.
Myself, Director Sather is a yes. Director Lauderger.
Yes.
Director Schober.
Yes.
And Director Yohan is absent, that the consent agenda with the removal of C passes with six yes and one absent.
All right, items removed from the consent agenda, 10.0, we had item C removed. Okay.
Mr. Chair, I recommend the board removes Brian Mary as a signer from all those accounts, and changes that line to add Spencer Ahni, Business Manager, as signer of those accounts.
I would make that motion.
Did you say you checked with our tax people, or you didn't, or you're going to?
For
That's somebody other than Spencer? What's that called when too many people, you have to have three different people on, what's that called, rotation of?
Yeah, it's
What's that term?
I don't know, it's checks and balances, pretty much is the
Yeah, basically, but
It's just not a great idea, because I mean, we have, right now, we have Janelle in the office, and she's the one that writes the checks, and it's not a great idea to have her signing it, too.
No, I know, but maybe just take some direction from that?
Oh, we will.
But if you're gonna name Spencer, I'm just saying.
I find Spencer. It's not like we sign for the safety deposit box every day.
So, the motion by Director Schober, support by Director Addy, to designate Spencer Ahni as our
To remove Brian Mary.
To remove Brian Mary and to add Spencer Ahni as our
Sign up for the safety deposit box, impressed online banking, and high school and Franklin, I do think.
Yes. Any more discussion on that? Kelly, can I get a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Director Sather is a yes. Director Addy.
Yes.
Director Sorkin.
Yes.
Director Genalini.
Yes.
Director Schober.
Yes.
Director Lauderger.
Yes.
And Director Yohan is absent, that passes with six yes and one absent.
Okay. 11.0 personnel, there is none. 12.0, new business, 12.1, discussion on cumulative records.
Mr. Chair, I sent in a board bag, a fact sheet on cumulative records, and the reason I'm bringing this up now, and I don't want to scare you into thinking I'm gonna have you vote on something today, because I'm not, I just wanted to start the conversation, because at some point in the next three, four years, this district's gonna have to decide how we're going, because we have like two classrooms in the basement that are full, top to bottom, full of school records from, basically from the time this district started 100 years ago. And there are lots of things in there, I mean, there's kindergarten artwork, all the way up to Iowa basics, to many, there's, there's lots of stuff in each folder that moving forward, we can decide to just keep it all in storage, or we can, what would be my recommendation is that we digitize it, and when you digitize it, you have to go through each one. And oddly enough, we have a lot of people that have time on their hands right now and go through every one to make sure that there are standardized things in that, and the list that, the fact sheet that I gave you kinda indicates what stuff needs to be kept, and if you agree to that, then you can take this home and noodle it over and whatnot, but basically standardized testing, form indicating titles, special ed or 504 services, year-end report cards, record or access, record of access, transfer log, preschool screening, student accident reports, yearly attendance summaries is the baseline for what needs to be kept, and you'll notice as you read through, there are a bunch of other things on there, health, special ed records, there is a period of time that the school needs to keep them, but after that period of time, and it's usually six years, they shouldn't be destroyed. The other thing to keep in mind is anytime a school is going through this activity, you do have to go through, if you decide, and I'm, that's an if, like I said, you can choose to do nothing. But if we do go through this and digitize these things, we do have to contact the Minnesota Historical Society, because they have things in those records that they are interested in, that's not shredding, so, but we'll cross that bridge when, if and when we fully.
Okay. So we're just having a discussion on that.
Yeah, if anyone has any questions on it, or they just hate the idea, or whatever, I mean, I won't pursue it any further if you just don't wanna do it, but but I can, I can assure you there is not going to be room in the facility for what we currently have, just here, let alone with Virginia.
All right, thank you for that update or discussion. 12.2, update on long distance learning.
Mr. Chair, just wanted to update the board a little bit on distance learning, so of course last week, we released our students from school, and with the intent that we would be working on a distance learning plan. We have been working in conjunction with Virginia as well, just we're not too far off, but there are some variations from what they're doing. But we, I did convene a meeting of, the day, the day before we were gonna go out, I did convene a meeting of a cross group of teachers from each other, different grade levels and buildings, and we sat in this room here, and kinda went through what we should, what should be our expectation, whatnot, and we don't have a real clear vision of the final product of what is gonna be going out to students at this very moment, but what we did decide was that whatever mode of workflow that was gonna be universal across the board, so that the people that were supporting them didn't have to guess, or try to figure out programs that they were familiar with, so we did decide to go with SchoolAge. SchoolAge is a workflow app, and basically, just to put it in the simplest of terms, if you have a math worksheet, you can pass that on to all your students. Via SchoolAge, they can go in and actually complete that worksheet in SchoolAge and pass it back to the teacher, so it is basically a digital workflow, you can pass videos, you can record yourself doing a lesson, and post that on the SchoolAge, so that kids can have a reference if they don't, you can have live lessons, that type of thing. The only thing that we're struggling with a little bit is in the primary grades, it is a little bit cumbersome as far as the workflow part, so we're struggling a little bit with imagining kindergarten first and second graders being able to understand how to do that without us being able to be there and walk them through it for like a month. So we are looking at alternative modes of workflow potentially for that group, but everybody else, we will be real consistent, so that even families, if they have more than one kid, that they are familiar with just one platform, so they don't have to learn a bunch of them, and we're gonna do our best, we have been meeting daily via Zoom. I meet with a group of 20 or so about every hour, and we just go through, I let everyone speak about what questions, concerns they are having, what things are rising up, and we're tackling each problem as soon as we can, I feel that we're in a spot right now, that tomorrow the teachers will be back here. I feel that we're in a spot now that I can probably let them stay at home, and we can work remotely, I don't think I need to see them in person anymore. I feel pretty good about where we're at. Some of the big questions living there now is just content, what are we expecting with people, again, so we can be consistent, so that one teacher is a teacher, and the other one is not, and the consistency is really the whole key, so we don't get torn up on Facebook. So I feel pretty good about where we're at right now, we, it is a major learning curve for elementary, because high school, it's not so bad, because we've been doing SchoolAge for a couple of years, and most of the kids at least are familiar with it, elementary, we have not done it, and we don't have the kids in front of us to explain it, we're a little bit nervous about that, but we'll get through it.
All right, thank you for the update, also, I just wanna, I mean, I, I don't wanna go off too off topic here, but I know that, I mean, I know Deb's phone's been ringing, and she are you, are you, Deb, are you fine with the workload, or any phone, I mean, I'm sure you're getting tons of calls, and we got this election and all this stuff coming up? Just wanna make sure she's taken care of, that she's protected from people coming in.
I quarantine her, nobody can come in.
Yeah, all right.
Another problem with any type of office like that is people tend to lean over the thing and talk to you forever, and that's not necessarily a great thing, so we just
All right. Thanks for the update, okay, 12.3, update on
Can I ask one question?
Yeah.
When are you suspecting that we will be having the teachers working from home?
It could be as early as tomorrow. But definitely by Wednesday, I, we will be, I got everyone hooked up, everyone, we're videoconferencing, very adept at that, getting used to it, and I don't know that in-person meetings need to happen, at this point, I feel pretty comfortable that we're beyond that. The only thing I worry about is, I mean, that's the teacher group, I need to train all of my paras and special ed people now, because they have to deliver services remotely as well, and we have to get devices to our paras and title teachers, and I have to, I have to get them moving on that, but most of the classroom teachers, I feel pretty good about where we're at, and they could probably go home now.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that update.
And thank you to everybody that's been working so hard on it, because it is a, it's a major job.
So, yeah, very big disruption, but we'll get through this. 12.3, update on the coronavirus prevention.
So, when we got the order that schools being closed, we had school Monday and Tuesday that week, and we did practice with, even with the kids, we showed them what social distancing is, and we, every night, we had a complete clean down of the building. We went through every crad, every marker, pair of scissors, you name it, got cleaned over the next three days, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, so the building has been disinfected completely. All the teachers and staff were practicing social isolating, or social distancing while we were at work, and thinking I'm gonna reduce the load in the building in the next couple of days, but I allowed the teachers to stay home, work from home. We do have two instances of not having that, but in, so they might have to come in for that, but for the most part, everyone's pretty good at home, working on we're just kind of a holding pattern right now, hoping by Wednesday or Thursday, the governor will announce if we're coming back on the 30th, or if we're not, if we're not, we'll, we'll do it distance learning and try to best we can, I feel good about, I really appreciative of all the work the folks have put in, and it's, it's been, there's been a tremendous amount of stress on everyone, I mean, right down to the custodian that needs to come here and clean this stuff, and it's, it's been good, I mean, we got a good group of people here working on it.
Excuse me, Jeff, and this is probably going back to the last agenda item, but you say every, most of the teachers are set up well for internet, how does that work for the students? I would imagine that
Good point. We did do a, we called every family we have, and asked them about their internet connection, and we have 13 kids that do not have access to internet, and we are looking at hip contact AT&amp;T FirstNet, and we may have to buy those 13 kids a puck for a little while, so that they have access to it.
13, that's a lot lower number than I would have
Having bought 500 of those pucks last week.
Wow. That's a few.
I think the, and the reason we, I think we have to buy them, right, Jeff, is that anything we require of our students, this district has to pay for, so if we require that homework, we can.
I know that there was a report on Minneapolis TV, or one of the Minneapolis stations in regards to just the lack of internet or high-speed internet up in this area.
Well, and that's gonna be another question, I mean, they did respond that they have internet, but we might find that there's more than 13 that don't have adequate internet, so, but we'll find that on the coming days. Good question.
Isn't one school district driving around a mobile hotspot van or something?
There's, that's, schools that put them on the bus, which we're in the process of doing right now, we got a grant for that, the blind and foundation, but we don't have them yet, so, but yeah, they're driving around bus, we are, we're delivering meals every day, we're up to almost 200 meals that we're delivering every day, and I think that number's gonna increase, though, that they lifted the pre-reduced lunch restriction on. So, they, it wouldn't be a stretch for us to drive the bus around. We did put, Jason put a hotspot in the parking lot, if kids want it, their families want to park out in the parking lot. A free one.
Do you know how far that goes?
They typically go about 60 feet. I mean, they will go further, but far as quality of internet, yeah.
I think it would be important to note, too, that going forward, if more restrictions are put on us as a board as well, we may be having board meetings going forward via Zoom and telepresence as well. via Zoom and telepresence as well. So that will most likely be happening in the future.
Anyway, I just wanted the board to be aware that we're, we are working on it and I'm gonna send a letter home to parents tomorrow to update them on what's happening and tell them that, I hope on Wednesday or Thursday the governor says one or the other, coming back or not. To be honest with them, I guess not, but. But we can always be hopeful because this isn't all that fun.
I wanna be hopeful too because I've got a graduating senior, so.
They're anticipating a shelter in place coming up this week, so.
We almost thought it was, we almost thought it was coming today, but. We're usually two days behind Michigan and Wisconsin. All right, that's all I got.
Thank you for that update. 12.4, approved resolution 710 regarding intent on superintendency. The board would consider resolution 710 regarding the intent on superintendency.
Did we have discussion on this before?
Yeah, I mean, we'll make a motion.
Before we make a motion?
Okay.
Well, first I'm wondering why we need to do this right now? What's, what's the rush and why not wait till after the consolidation vote? We still have that 30 days. We could give, give a notice if we still wanted to do this, May 30th and still be within that 30, 31st and still be within that 30 days.
Of what?
What's, what's the reason?
June 1st, the contract end?
June 30th.
July 1st.
July 1st, it starts June 30th, so. What's the rush? And I don't know what the rush is for superintendent's contract either, what we're doing to combine it.
Well, I will speak to that. In my head, I would like to see it done sooner than later because we've been talking about it for quite some time. But also because it is, whether anybody wants to agree or not, it is prime season for superintendents to be interviewing elsewhere.
But we, but we are offered to know well.
I was speaking.
Okay, we just had that conversation.
But we, again, as I was saying, it's prime superintendent season, so they are, there's a great likelihood that both superintendents for both districts could be interviewing at this point. And again, as we spoke earlier during the work session, I think it's foolish if we were to, to post or try to get a new superintendent to come in. And with that being said, knowing that it is super, prime superintendent interviewing season and there's a chance we could lose them, I just, I think that it's in our district's best interest to continue to move forward with what we have planned to be doing.
Well, I disagree and just, if we aren't looking at if the board, which we never voted on it, but even if it's the majority, whether we vote or not, that you want to have the same superintendent for both consolidated and separate districts until consolidation, you're not looking for one. So what does it matter what the prime superintendent looking for a job season is, okay? So it doesn't make sense, that doesn't make sense.
Well, we did.
If you're not looking for anybody else.
We did discuss this at our, at our last meeting and that seemed to be the general direction that granted, not everyone was here. It did seem to be the direction that, that everyone wanted to go with us and include, I would say, including Jeff, with the caveat, and I've said all along and I've said at every ad hoc meeting also, I think Brandy would vote for that, that we do need to, I think it behooves us to, to come to terms with, with Jeff. And we can still pass this and assuming we come to terms in the next 30 days, which I would hope that if we're going to be voting on contracts after 30 days, that we would be voting on two contracts.
What's the rush though, Matt, before the vote?
Well, I, the, there is no rush, but I think it's, we're better, we're better served going forward as of July 1, regardless of the outcome of the consolidation vote, with one superintendent.
I just, I just, everything is, I mean, I, I kinda getting sick of that. Everything is a rush, everything is a rush. No, it's not a rush, it's just, it just seems like it's.
I've never said that before.
You were saying it's, we're always rushing, we're always rushing.
I've never said that before. You tell me where I said it, but anyway, forget that, don't.
You said, what's the rush?
I said it now, you said that. I'm always here, so anyway, don't go there. Go ahead, you, you barely say anything, so go right ahead.
Well, you know, this, the steps have been going, taken way in advance. Now, not calling it a rush, but all these decisions were made, colors are there before we're gonna consolidate it, you know? Boom, boom, on the May, May 12th, one way or the other, hopefully. If we're gonna consolidate or not, and then we can move on from there, right? That's the real deal. Everything is just been going, 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 but the cart's part of the horse, right from the start of this whole project.
Yeah, I think that you.
Decisions have to be made before we open the doors of new buildings. We need to know what principles are gonna be where. There's the business office, there's tons of things that needs to, needs to be done before we open the doors. It, we, we've been progressing forward, we've been doing these, you know, having meetings and listening sessions and stuff for, for, you know, for years now, two years at least, three maybe. We just need to keep moving forward and stop dragging the feet and, and people, there has been discussion around the table about exactly what we are going to potentially vote on. If you don't agree with the resolution, you have the option of voting no. If you do agree with it, you have the option of voting yes. But we need to take some sort of action and it's before you today.
Your comment on opening the doors, we will have three years before we open the doors. Isn't that time element in our, put some of these things together?
There's lots of things that need to be done between now and the time the door is open too. Jeff gave us a huge long list the other day and I know, I, I, if, if he's not going to or has not yet given that to us, he will be soon.
Oh, no, send them.
He will send that out soon, but I mean, the, the print is just as small as this and it's pages worth of things that need to be done.
I'll work on that.
He will work on it and get it to you, but like he said, but there's tons of things that need to be done and, and the longer we, we wait, I mean.
But Brandy, he will have his job until July 1st.
Margaret, Margaret also talked about that whole 12-month deal and giving Jeff notification. And you heard what she had to say about that, but you know, we didn't do that back then because we're dragging our feet, dragging our feet, dragging our feet. And here we are, I mean, it could have potentially, could have potentially been a problem. Luckily, it's in statute that it's, it's not a problem, but I mean, we need to keep moving forward and not taking 10 steps backward. So that's all I can say about that.
Go ahead, Kelly.
The superintendent stuff we have been talking about for months. We were talking about before the new year and then we had clearly said in all of our collaborative meetings, in, in many of our separate board discussions, that this was the top priority in moving forward before we can look at other positions and other structure. So this isn't something that is being sprung on anyone. My concern is people need to be present at these meetings because we don't have time to keep rehashing and having the same conversations that we've had meeting after meeting. So that, I do not agree that this is quick. I, I believe that we are right on track with the meetings and discussions that we continue to have. And I am in support of one superintendent regardless of a consolidation, so I'm in support of this being moved prior to the voting.
And, and there, there's one difference between Matt and I and I hate to, to bring it up, but Matt feel, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, because I don't wanna put words in your mouth, but Matt feels like as a board, we need to, we need to come up with a, a contract for Jeff with the construction liaison slash whatever, whatever that position ends up being, we need to come to terms, we need to, to deal with that first. And I disagree with that. I do think that we need to move forward with the superintendent's contract as soon as we are able, which if we pass this resolution tonight, it will be in 30 days. I do feel like we need to make that decision because we're looking at who is steering the ship going forward after June 30th? Who is steering the ship? And I think that's, that, that is a very important job, especially with everything we have going on in our district. And we want to do our best to come up with a contract for Jeff as well as a construction liaison, because again, Kelly has mentioned many times that she feels that that's a necessity to have a construction liaison. And again, it's just a matter of figuring out how that's going to work or what that's going to look like. But we have all intentions of coming up with something for Jeff as well, because we do need a construction liaison. And we need to make that decision with the, with the superintendent. I mean, I think that's the priority, the superintendent contract is a priority. The board can weigh in on that as well, but.
And I, I, I would just say that I think we've gone down this path with, with kind of focusing on, on Noel as the superintendent based on the discussion, starting with the discussion that we had at the joint board meeting where Jeff had indicated a willingness that he was, if we were, assuming we're able to come to terms with him as a construction liaison or in some other capacity, then he's willing to stand aside and would pursue the superintendent of the joint or, the shared superintendent or of the, at the time we're talking about the consolidated district. So that's, that's where I'm coming from.
And you're right, that, that is a change that has been made, it's a shift and that's what I don't agree about. It's a shift from having just a consolidated superintendent to now it's a consolidated superintendent, same superintendent whether we consolidate or not. That was a shift, that's what I'm calling a shift and that did change, okay? To me, that makes a big difference because if, if that, if that, if we don't consolidate, I think until we do, we should have separate superintendents, period. That, I feel very strongly about that and that is a big difference. And, and the other thing is these contracts go on through the 30th of June, they don't expire till July 1st. You can still do everything that you're talking about, Brandy, because they're still gonna be in these positions until then. He's still gonna be the superintendent for another two and a half months or three months, whatever it is. And, and so, so, and the other thing is that here you, here you want to pass this tonight and you're looking at a contract with, with Noel and a contract for whatever his position is gonna be, you don't even know what that is yet. You don't even know what that combination position is. And so why, again, why is the rush before you even know what, what, what capacity he's going to be at to do this? You've got plenty of time. You could still do it till, I said, May 31st and you could still go on. Nothing's gonna change until then anyway. Yes, there's lots of work to be done. You can have whatever superintendent you want, but I think you need to wait till after that vote and then I, I strongly suggest we have, maybe it'll pass, fine, then I'll say, there you go, that's, that's the bottom line. If passed one superintendent, I totally agree, but not one superintendent if we have two separate districts. And I think that's very important to wait for.
I disagree.
I disagree as well. I mean, it was always discussed from years ago that we should get down to one superintendent.
If we're consolidating.
No, no, that's before they've even talked about consolidating. This is having, you were a big supporter of having one superintendent for both Virginia and Allison, you know, together.
When?
Oh, before you were on the board. You know, we had that discussion.
Oh, come on, don't.
I agree with Bill. That was thrown out on the collaborative meetings when we initially started talking about ways we can parent share. When we looked at transportation, we talked about administratively being very heavy and it was thrown out about the superintendents too.
So when some of these resolutions come before the board, I think I would, I would suggest that we have, instead of saying, well, that's the majority feeling of the board, then let's vote on some of these things and then at the next meeting, no, then at the next meeting to take formal action on it, okay? So if you make a decision, you say, well, that's the direction the board wants to take, then let's make that a formal decision and a formal vote and let it be, let it be official, okay? Because now it's like, well, you know, you're telling me, well, everybody supported it and we talked about it a long time, okay, then let's put that official and then.
That was the direction that we got from the board when we talked about it at both our study session and at our regular meeting last time.
Then make it a resolution and vote on it.
That's what we've got before us is a resolution for us to vote. If you don't agree with it, then you vote no. If you agree with it, then you vote yes.
I say we have those kinds of decisions for other things too, before we get resolutions like this in a packet. And before any of us know, before Thursday or Friday when we get our packet, that this is coming before us. If that's the direction, I think we should have voted on it whenever, put it on the agenda two, three weeks ago, Bill, a month ago or whatever. And then we know that we're going in that direction and the majority voted for it. You're right, this, by default, there's going to be a vote on here and there'll be a, you know, a majority vote, but.
Any further?
Yeah, any further discussion on this?
And if I do, if I were to vote for this, I would want to amend the third whereas and take it out, that the board intends to offer Noel Schmidt a contract as a superintendent. At this time, that's not, at this time, that's not appropriate.
I would like to make a motion to approve resolution 710 regarding intent on superintendency.
Motion by Director Lotteger. Support by Director Addy.
I move on amendment to take out that third whereas as I just explained, to delete Yeah, amended to take out that we intend to offer superintendent Schmidt a superintendent contract.
So Margaret?
You can do that at a later time.
So Margaret, if she's making a motion to amend it, to take out a piece, do we have to vote on that and then come back and do another motion again for approving the resolution?
You vote on the amendment first.
Was there a second on it?
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second on the amendment or on the motion, the original motion?
On the amendment.
I made, I made.
Well, no, she asked the question, I asked her a question.
We have, we have an attorney that is present and this is the reason why she's here. So Margaret, I made a motion to approve resolution 710 regarding intent on superintendency.
Bill seconded it.
And I seconded.
And then I made an amendment and that amendment was seconded and you do the amendment before the main motion.
So Bill seconded and Polly made an amendment to my motion to take out a piece of wording.
In that contract.
So we vote on, on her amendment first, whether or not we agree with that, with what she is asking to be removed, correct? And then, and then if it does or doesn't pass, if it doesn't pass, her amendment, I can make the motion again, correct?
No, that motion stands.
That's correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Motion just stands.
So she's the attorney, I'm going by what she says. She's got the education. So right now on the table.
I guess I'm an American-born dummy, huh?
There is a motion, it's not about whether or not you're a dummy, Polly, and I take offense to that. I'm just saying, she is our legal counsel and I'm asking legal counsel for advisement.
You can left it at that.
So right now on the table is Polly's amendment to take out the portion where it states the intent is to.
To remove the whereas the board intends to hire Superintendent Carey.
Schmidt.
I mean Schmidt, Superintendent Schmidt, I am sorry.
So whereas the board intends to offer a superintendent contract, and that says intends to offer a superintendent contract to Dr. Noel Schmidt, she was asking that portion to be removed. So we need to vote by, by roll call vote on whether or not we agree with Polly's amendment?
Correct.
Okay.
So Kelly, we need a roll call vote for that amendment to remove that.
Director Lotteger?
No.
Director Sather, myself is a no. Director Addy?
No.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Genalini?
Yes.
Director Yuhana's absent. Director Schubert?
No.
That the amended motion fails with four yeses and, or sorry, four no's and two yeses.
And one absence. So I will again make a motion to approve resolution number 710 regarding intent on superintendency.
Okay, and I will second that. Any discussion? Director Sather, can I get a roll call vote please?
Yes, Director Lotteger?
Yes.
Director Sather is a yes. Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Sorkin? Sorry, Director Genalini?
No.
Director Yuhana's absent. Director Schubert?
Yes.
When that motion passes with four yeses and two noes for Resolution number 710.
Twelve point, moving on, 12.5.
Thank you, Margaret.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I think, yeah, I think we're good. I think you're, you can go.
Thanks, Margaret.
Thanks, Margaret. Uh, 12.5 was.
It'll be Resolution 711, which is relating to appointing absentee ballot board members for the May 12 election.
I have a question. Why aren't the names in here like last year, or last time?
I've got the names, I just haven't had a chance to, I'm still working on trying to get everybody on my list.
Do we have more people that are qualified than we are going to appoint or what? And who chooses who gets to be appointed if we have more than we need?
Certain people are, have the training to be on the ballot board.
But it says everybody has to be qualified to, to be trained to be an election judge.
Yes.
So then, but do we have more people than we are going to appoint?
No.
We have just as many people as we.
We have people that are now saying that, yes, they were going to be a judge, but now they're not sure because of the, the virus that's going around.
So how many are we anticipating to appoint and need?
For the ballot board?
There's two, there's three things, a ballot board, or there's two things, and a hospital healthcare facility.
Right, we have two people on the ballot board. Heather Barea and Jeremy Limata, both of them have done ballot board before. So they know how that works and they're trained. And for the healthcare facility, Heather Barea and Renee Lynseth have both done healthcare facility before. And they are trained for those. Um, the original, one that was in your packet, we had to change because we had to add number three on here, which is pursuant to Minnesota statute subdivision two. The superintendent is hereby authorized and directed to appoint additional absentee ballot board members and individuals to deliver absentee ballots to hospital patients and residents of healthcare facilities within the 25 days of the school district's special election on May 12, 2020. Upon the determination of such additional absentee ballot board members and individuals to deliver absentee ballots will be required. So we had to get that added in there because if somebody is sick, then we are able to pick somebody else from the list of, um, election judges that was given to us by the county. That's where the list of election judges comes from, is the county. And then what I've done is sent out letters, trying to get people to volunteer, you know, to, to do this. Of course, they're going to get paid, but you try to get them to sign up and I'm having some trouble because I've got 12 precincts to do.
All right, um, so we only have, let's see, so Heather Barea, she's doubling for one of the both of them?
She's doing, yes.
And then, so we only have three in total at this point in time?
No, we have two, two for the ballot board and two for the healthcare facility.
Well, I meant three different people that we have to pick from that have said, okay.
For ballot board, yeah, there's.
No, for both of them, for both of them. I asked you if we have more.
I think this should be.
No, because we have to, we're appointing certain people, okay? And I'm just asking, do we have more people than we need on a list?
Well, we have, they would be an alternate.
So, all I'm saying is, okay, we have three different people. One of them is going to double, okay? Okay, do we have a list of five or seven that are, that are wanting, that are saying they would do it? We only have these three so far that are saying they would do it. That's all I wanted to say.
And do you need more than two in each one of these capacities? So two is?
Two is what we need, um, for, for these particular ones. And then, um, we'll, we'll put in an alternate. And then we will also, um, that's why we've got that third line item in there. So if one of those people can't do it, or they're sick or whatever, then the superintendent can say, okay, we'll have this person do it then from the election, the list of election judges. There's only certain people that have had the training for certain things, whether it be the, um, healthcare facility or the ballot board.
And if, if there should be an election, whether it's going to be all absentee or not, a physical election, then we would need way more.
Oh, yes, I'm looking on that.
No, I just.
You have to have, you have to have three judges, a head judge and two other judges at each precinct.
Okay, we have to have at least three.
Yes, and I've got about three or four precincts completely done and the other ones, I'm having some trouble.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Do they have to be from that respective precinct to volunteer? Okay.
They can be from, but people don't like going to other precincts.
Right, yeah, I know, some of the precincts you only have a handful of votes.
Well, then the goofy thing is three of our precincts were declared mail-in ballot only, but nobody at the state knew what to do with that yet, so.
So those are gone back to the precinct, but we'll be doing a hand count on those.
Really? Three precincts?
Three precincts, yeah.
All right.
So, so those are the names and then, um.
I would just, I would just, I mean, approve this, just put, throw the names in there, please.
So can I get a motion to approve 12.5?
I will make the motion.
Motion by Director Lotteger.
Second.
Second by Director Schober. Any more discussion? Can I get a roll call vote, Kelly, on this?
Yeah, she's out. I wish that one died.
All right, she's got her finger out.
All right, I was unmuted, or I was muted.
All right.
Director, Director Genalini?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
Director Addy?
Yes.
Um, myself, Director Saether is abstaining. I can't see the 711 resolution, so. Uh, Director Lotteger?
Yes.
Director Schober?
Yes.
The Resolution 711 passes with five yes, one abstain and one absent.
All right, 13.0 whole business. Just prepare.
Um, 13, old business, 13.1 was Polly.
I just wondered where you are, Bill, at those appointments for our committees.
The committees, the list was supposed to be, Jeff, you were supposed to send that committee list.
He did that, same list.
Oh.
He sent it out once.
Polly signed up.
Um, and you know, to be completely honest, I did not. I haven't even looked at it. I've just, again, with everything that's been going on.
Resent it.
I already sent it.
Okay, very good.
Sorry, I apologize.
Okay.
We confirmed we did, uh, we had something in the works and we got sidetracked. But we are meeting every day.
That's called coronavirus.
And. And like.
And with the other group, too.
Um, 14.0 administrative report and information.
We're good, I talked enough today.
Okay. Uh, 15.0 board member topics. Start with you, Matt.
Hope I see you all again soon.
Um, I, again, I'll just, I want to thank everybody that's worked so hard at figuring out the distance learning thing and, you know, minute-by-minute changes, it seems like, and it's a, it's a difficult task, but I think there's, there is potential for some new ways of teaching that I think are kind of exciting. Um, but also, you know, thank you to Superintendent Carey. I'm sure his plate's been full and he's been pretty busy lately as well. So just thank you to everybody that's, that's been a part of the distance learning and, and thank you to those who are, of course, actively social distancing to keep people safe from, from getting anything they don't want to get. Hand sanitizer.
You good?
I'm good.
Uh, Kelly, you have anything?
Yeah, just a quick, um, again, thanking everyone because in my world right now, my vacation was canceled and that is what happens and I can imagine you guys are dealing with the same thing that I'm dealing with over in this world. So I appreciate all of your guys' work with administration staff members from every single area because I know, um, there's been a lot of cleaning and everyone has been having to just do everything and anything to help get through this. I did want to point out one little thing that was really nice and my daughter will probably yell that I'm sharing this, but, um, Ms. Belt, she was in Ms. Belt's class and Ms. Belt took the time to read a book to the students. So I thought that was sweet and any of those little connections for the students with their teachers is so meaningful and so thank you, Ms. Belt.
Yeah, I guess I just would like to say that, that, uh, you know, we will probably continue to have our meetings in here unless told otherwise. And these meetings will limit our, will limit the room to 10. We'll try to get it disinfected and sanitized and before we come into each room, or into this room each time. Uh, but thanks for everybody for attending. That's all I got to say.
I'd just like to bring up again that we discussed a couple of times and then we had some meetings. They were those ones that the union people came to and we have three, three on one day and three on another day. What did you call that? Some kind, what was the title of that informational consolidation, whatever? They came and they asked questions about, well, at least up here, about the contracts and everything, okay? So we had talked about that originally as being a meeting, meeting on the Eller's report and it turned into a little something different. And we also talked about putting that, that full Eller's report about the tax impact and everything, or the impact of all of those, all of those factors on our website. And it doesn't appear on ours, it doesn't appear on Virginia's and, and that's an important document. And, and I think I'm going to ask again, if not, I'll ask it to be put on the agenda for the vote the next time is, let's put that information, we've got all kinds of other information for people, get that Eller's report on. People have been asking me about it because it's been referred to and Matt, we even passed out a page. Let's put the whole thing out there so people can access it. Can we get that done?
All right, Jeff.
In some conspicuous place.
I mean, I guess I don't know how it all is entailed into getting that on the website.
It's electronic, you just have to.
All right, Tom?
Well, I'd like to see that, uh, in writing from Carl Sanderson, that they are liable if anything happens to the building within one or two, three, five years, whatever, if Paul's into the general construction age or whatever, and have that right, right, and they will be responsible.
For how long?
Well, whatever, uh, I'm not saying forever, nothing lasts forever, I can do that though. Probably buildings that are 30, 35 years you're repairing them again, but whatever is normal in a construction.
I mean, I guess, I guess when you look at these old buildings, I guess I'm, I'm just, I mean, you look at these old buildings, yeah. They were built, but they still needed lots of maintenance too. They still needed roofs and touch pointing and heating systems and stevelings. I mean, it goes without saying that these buildings, you know, these buildings have needed lots of maintenance over the course of the years.
Oh, wait, no, I'm just saying, I think we had a, we had a problem not too long ago about that walkway between and when they opened up the walls, we said, oh, it was done, it wasn't done right and so who paid for that? Somebody said, oh, let's let insurance take it.
We're on board member topics and so on.
We are, and I'm following up on his, is that okay that I said that?
That was built 30 years ago.
Well, I'm just saying, in that situation, if something like that were to happen, okay?
Our buildings were tough.
But no one's.
Buildings were tough going into, uh, a few years back, that was never put out. Uh, our electrical was upgraded, that was never put out in the 90s. That was never put out.
Never put out.
But I just want, I don't want to hang the taxpayers with.
Shoddy construction, I get it.
And I just, I'm piggybacking on that. It'd be really good, Jeff, if you could try hard to encourage Kraus to have someone at, however we do our next. I think it would be better to have it at a joint session, which I thought we had coming up, but we don't completely understand, um, that. But to have representative from Kraus, I don't know if it's Pat Gallagher or, or if it's John Hewnick, to say, this is who, this is what we're doing and to be available to answer questions, um, like, like Tom raises, because I, I mean, that's, I, I think that'd be helpful for all of us.
It's not a problem, it's just a matter of, the only problem is if we ever get to meet again.
I know, I know.
Um, and, sorry, one more thing. I believe that you need to, um, I believe you need to do something, get a signature.
Right here.
Okay, just wanting to make sure that. You're aware of that. Okay, thank you.
Uh, can I, before we close, can I let Debbie know that I can come in the morning and do signatures?
Okay.
What time will someone be there?
7:30.
7:30.
So that being said, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Oh, okay.
Support.
All right.
See you guys.
See ya.
You'd have to do a roll call vote too. Adjourn, do we?